Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backm and Club Study Session for July 23rd, 2025. If you're interested in joining our study session or playing in our weekly tournament, send an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com. Okay, so we've got the Hive Mind going up against me and Mike and Rick, and we got the opening roll, and so... What do you guys want to do? How fun do you want to play it?
Okay, so there are three opening rolls that are pretty much equal in equity. Making the two-point, running, and splitting.
Yeah.
In no match score is splitting correct. The other two, right? You look at every map score, the other two, one of them is better. But I like to make the split play.
Even though it's wrong, technically wrong?
According to XG.
The split play being...
Which one? Which one is the split play?
This is the splitting play.
Which one is the split play?
This is the splitting play.
The one he's showing now, though.
Really? I would have thought the running play was not correct.
I have no strong feeling, but I would probably run to the 14th.
Okay, so Mike wants to split. I usually am not going to run unless it's like a one-point match, so let's do the split. Sure. I was hoping you guys wanted to make the two-point. That'd be more fun, but we'll do this at this point. Okay, and... It's showing a one-point match?
No, it's 11 away, 11 away, Stephen guy.
It's right. Okay, so the team has to give me some candidate plays so that I can put it into Slido.
Play for 5-2, so split.
So was that 24.2, 13.8?
Yes.
Okay, any others?
No.
I might be tempted to do the five down and the two down because splitting puts the checker on the 22-point right in the guns of your three builders on the 19, on my 19, 17, and 16. So it does bring another checker into the zone, and it starts to unstack the 13-point.
On the other hand, we lose a lot more pips if that checker is hit by the direct shot from this, from our bar point. So, yeah.
But they have to use half their roll in order to hit that, in which case they can't build any structure.
Per point? So, well, let's vote on Slidl then, I guess.
So I have the voting open.
Let me get there.
Okay, there was one other suggestion in the chat, which is to hit and step up, so 24, 22, 6, 1. I'm gonna put that into the Slidl also. If you like that better, you can still change your vote. Oh, my first one is not right. Should be 24, 22, 13. There we go. Hey, it's close. Is anybody not voted yet, wants to cast a vote? We're tied right now. Okay, we're gonna have to pick one. Tom, are you voting?
I already did vote, and I even voted for myself, which is unusual.
Ooh, wow. All right, we need a way to break the ties. We're gonna have to flip for it. Usually, I play the role of tie-breaking vote. This is where we actually need Bill Pao to...
As our dedicated tiebreaker.
Yeah, he's a dedicated tiebreaker, but he's not here. Okay, I'm going to...
What's the most fun?
What? Okay, yes, actually, Tom, you have to tell us what is the most fun play.
Let me look at the choices. Versus what's right?
Yeah, don't worry about what's right.
I don't think there's anything so exceedingly fun. I would pick it above the 13, 11, 13, 8 play. That's my vote.
Okay.
Okay, let's do that.
Let's do it. Let's go back and check. Change the set. Something's funny with the settings on my XG. For one thing, it's rolling automatically, and I don't know why.
The other thing going for that move is it pulls, they've slotted their 18, and I like to pull them off the slot, but that's just me.
I think XG prefers the hit-and-split.
Okay, yeah, the hit-and-split after a 6-4. Okay, the main reason is that when your opponent goes down to the nine-point, they have a lot of building rolls, and so you really want to hit as a measure of distraction. Okay, 5-3 to play for the white team. I just said, just as soon, make the three-point.
I'm looking for something better. I don't see it.
Agreed.
Okay, three-point it is. Okay, 6-5 for the red team.
13, 7, 6, 1. Two in the bar, better by far.
13, 7, so this is a big play. Right? Any others that we ought to consider?
What about putting two of them on the bar?
I think that's what the suggestion was, 13, 7, 6, 1.
Okay, I didn't hear it.
That also is the fun play.
Yeah, that is fun.
Well, I mean, we can consider the default play of 24, 13.
Okay, I'll put that in there.
But we are behind in the race. I'm not so sure that's correct.
No, and we're outboarded, so we don't want to just leave that checker on the 11 either.
Did anybody propose? Oh, never mind, this is a different play, I'm sorry.
Well, technically, there is also 24, 18, 11, 6, but that looks terrible, so probably I wouldn't vote for it.
Okay, I think four votes have come in for the big play, so it looks like that's what it's gonna be, 13, 7, 6, 1. Okay, so I have no idea why XG is just rolling. It's not even asking for a cube, not that I think that was warranted.
Yeah, but that's troublesome. What happens if you click the cube? Nothing, right?
Oh, auto-roll. Okay, I think I got it. I had a weird setting. I don't know why XG messes with my settings. Anyway, okay, back to the team. 5-3 to play.
You could have had a better roll there, Jason.
Oh, but, yeah, but now, now maybe I don't want that.
I think you hit on the 16.
Oh, you can disable it in the settings. I found the option, Jason.
It's auto-roll, right?
Yes, it's in the second tab called "Game" of Settings. It's the first option of the second tab in the Settings.
Game?
There's a game tab, yes.
And then?
And then the first option should be auto-roll.
Yeah. Yeah, I've removed auto-roll. I should be okay now. Okay, 24, 16, any others?
8, 3, 6, 3.
8, 3, okay, yeah, make the three-point.
We didn't check what move was correct on the previous one, did we?
Okay, I'll go back after the vote on this.
Okay.
7, 4, 6, 1, 7, 4, 6, 1.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Oh, no, never mind, sorry. No, yeah, 6, 1, 7, 4, 6, 1.
I'll just point out, Eric, that it says on the screen, the Hive Mind has made one mistake of minus .093, and that was the one from earlier, so the last roll must have been, move must have been incorrect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is fascinating. This is an interesting roll.
Yeah, see, the hidden play, it's wide open, right? A lot of blots. That's one of the problems.
Getting a two-point board and hitting him, I mean, the 6, 1, 7, 4 definitely has some interest for me.
Yeah. Well, the voting is open. Hey, it's close. All right, slightly ahead is the hitting play, 24, 16. Okay, let's go ahead and roll with that. Yeah, it's taking the lead. All right, here we go. Let's just go back and look at some of the other plays, like, all right, our our three-point, making the three-point. We didn't look at 18 to 10. Okay, that's very close. The double-hit play was right, and now... The, this is the most recent one.
Double-hit play was right by over triple-bopper.
Ah, the 7, 4, 6, 1, what came out on top? How about that? Maybe too many blots? I don't know.
Yeah, probably, too many blots.
Okay, Mike and Rick, we don't want a cube, right?
And also, when you have a...
I don't see a cube quite yet.
I find that when you have a blot on the one-point, you want to cover it as fast as possible, like
That's true, yeah.
Very often, you have to cover it as soon as you can.
That's right. Okay, we're not gonna cube, so we'll roll.
They will. There's a fun move option, right? The best move that is a lot of fun.
Did they roll double sixes?
Is... Is there also a cube fun play?
Oh, a cube fun play? Yeah, I mean, yeah, this would be fun to cube this with five blocks around, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's right yet.
I agree, I agree, but it's...
Wait, we are a move behind, like, we already played, we covered our one-point.
No, that's like, did not win the vote.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna roll. Well, we've got some options now.
First one I see is hitting.
Well, there's two ways to do it. You could do it like this, or you could do it like this.
Thank you for not making the two ways, 21, 18, and 22, 18. I thought you might do that.
Wait a minute, are we red?
Yes, you're red, and you're playing against me and Rick and Mike. You're not playing against XG today.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
We are the triad. We've taken over the role of XG.
Hmm, okay.
I think I like hitting the 18 more than hitting the 9.
I think I like hitting the 18 more. Mike, what do you think?
I agree also, but I also think the double is closer than we think.
Okay, go back.
Yeah, I agree, it's close, and depending on what happens now, this could be a very volatile roll.
All right, well, Mike, if it's a big no-double, you owe me a nickel, so...
Okay.
Okay, all right, let's hit on the 18. Okay, and now, I'm sure they're not gonna double, so let's roll them. Oh, they danced. Oh, now, ha, ha, ha. Okay, we'll look at it in a minute, but now we gotta decide on a cube, so the race is even. We have a better board by a little bit. They have blots everywhere. They have four blots.
But the only ones that are direct shots are actually duplicated, so it's not gonna be as easy to pick up a blot as it looks.
Right.
But if we don't hit a blot, we're either, we can make an interior point, we can make a point, a defensive point, something good should happen.
How do we lose our market here?
Double fours loses the market.
Yeah. Probably double twos also. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's a ton of market losers, because we can't, aside from rolling a double, we can't make an interboard point and hit a blot.
Well, I think this is not a double, but let's send over a cube. It's a bluff double.
Y'all have played your cards very close, Mike.
Yeah. Over the board, you would consider sending this over as a bluff double there, Mike?
No, I think this is not too good, and I think it's a double.
All right, I think it's not a double, and I'm not so convinced it's a great bluff double. All right, so, Rick, you break the tie. You want a cube or no?
My instinct was yes. The question about the market losers, though, is a real concern of whether that means it's premature if there aren't any, but it's the fun move, so I'm gonna say yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not only the, it's a sequence, right? It's not only our...
I don't know what this thing is doing. It did not accept a cube. Hang on, maybe I can maybe I can play from position.
But in terms of market losers, not just how good our rolls are, but the sequence of their responses also. Like, you know. So we might not hit anything, but they might dance again.
Oh, Jason, instead of clicking the cube in the board itself, there should be a cube button just underneath the board.
I always click on the cube on the board, so I don't understand what it's doing. Okay. All right, so we are going to double. Okay, there we go. That worked.
So that five-four-year-old is not gonna be your roll?
Yeah, that's, I voided that, so you don't know what we're gonna roll.
I would drop this.
No, I would, it's an absolute take. Yes.
Okay, the voting is open.
I think there's a lot of backgammon left here.
Take.
Absolute take.
Keep in mind, Jason wasted our four, and we know what kind of dice roller he is in general, so...
Yes, very true.
We will not fall for your bluff, Jason.
I think there's a lot of gambling potential in here. We could get blitzed very, I know they don't have a lot in the zone, but we could get blitzed very easily. There's a good chance we could have two on the board.
I don't think we can get blitzed when they only have two builders that they can use to improve their board.
Right, or we could get primed. I mean, there's just a lot of gambling potential here, I think.
Yeah, but we can also not get any of those things and recover very easily, so you gotta, you gotta look at the bright side as well, so, yeah.
No, that's all true, that's right.
Well, the bright side's gotta be at least 25%.
Their direct hint in number is duplicated, so we are not in as much danger as we think.
We already have one up on the bar, though.
Doesn't matter.
So, okay.
Yeah, I think it's...
That's why we voted.
They are too underdeveloped. They're too underdeveloped for this to be a drop, I think. Yeah, so, let's take it.
Okay, most of the votes are to take. Has everybody cast a vote?
Take, take.
Yeah, lots of takes.
I can't cast a vote. I only can speak or maybe write somewhere.
Okay, that's fine. Lots of, you wanted to take?
Absolutely.
Okay, lots of takers. Okay, let's take. You guys are gonna take. Okay, now, let's go back and look at some of these before, like... Here's the cube.
Oh, it is a complete borderline taker pass? Wow, incredible.
Okay, well, Rick saved the day by going for the cube. Because I didn't want to double this.
What if you go back?
It was 50/50 on whether it's a take or a drop?
Yes.
Complete other 50/50, yes.
Jason, what if you went back to your last decision point?
Yeah, somehow it's not even showing me the cube on that one. My XG is really weird today. I don't understand what's going on. So apparently I can't, so, sorry.
Can't do what?
I can't look at the cube action on our previous roll before we rolled this 4-3. It's not showing me a tab for that. I can't quite figure out what's going on. It's not even showing me any tabs for cube actions, so it's, this is really weird. Okay, now we got a 6-2 to play.
That's a more adjacent one.
Yeah. Yeah, Stephen, I know how that usually works. It's not showing up for me, and I don't know why. It's all very weird.
One option to consider, 23, 21, 13, 7.
Okay, 23, 21, 13, 7.
Or 21, 13. Those are the only two I see to consider, so...
21, 13. I don't know, maybe that's a little passive. We can do a lot because of the blot in the board, right?
18, 10?
18, 10. Interesting. I'm finding this play kind of intriguing.
Yeah, I actually kind of like 18, 10, but I think you're right, the 23, 21, 13, 7.
Mike?
I think those are the two top plays, 18, 10, and 23, 21, 13, 10. So I won't argue for either one. You guys can choose either one, but had you both, but no double, I would have argued again for the double.
Uh-huh. Okay, so I think, I think this is gonna be the play, then. I like this. Rick, you like it?
Yeah, yeah.
Mike seems to be on the fence, so, all right, we'll do that. Okay, let's roll. Okay. Oh, here's our 6-2. All right, we got it right. It's good.
18, 16, 15.
And go bar 23, 16 to 11.
I like that.
Yes. But we can also hit on the 18.
What about hitting, going to 18?
That looks even better.
Okay, sorry, I'm having trouble with my Slido, too. Okay.
I think with our...
R23, 16, 11, and then there was hitting on the 18? Okay, any others? Okay, the votes are coming in.
Hitting on the 18 is definitely the fun play.
Oh, no question about that.
Nice place, too.
Okay, there's three votes for that. The other one, just the one. Okay, it looks like bar 18 is the choice, so let's make that play. Okay. Wow, XG liked the other one. I guess the position is too loose? I don't know.
I thought they hit.
Okay, 6-3 for the white team. Only one play.
Hit, yeah.
Hit, yeah. Mike, you like the hit?
Anything else, anything else just gives them too much initiative with us having a lot of blots.
We still have the better board. They still have a blot in their board. This is definitely the play. Okay, here we go. All right, coming off the bar, 5-2.
Hit them again. Well, last time, it was corrected to do the 11, so let's do that with...
No, at this point, why not just keep hitting them? Then checkers back.
Unfortunately, we're going to send him with four checkers in our board, and I don't like that position.
Well, and the other idea, too, is that for them to cover the 18, they might have to strip their 12. So I'd go, I think I'd go 23. Come in on the 23 and go 16, 11.
Okay, I've got that in the Slidl.
Actually, I liked it last time, so it's probably correct.
Eric metagaming it.
Yes. Extreme gaming it.
All right, the hit is still winning. All right. We'll do it. There goes the hit. All right. Five-one to play.
Aren't you gonna?
Oh, yeah, let's look.
Yeah.
16, 11 again.
Oh, yeah.
Eric, you're a genius.
Told you. Eric, I voted for it.
I think that was your second chance.
Yeah.
Can we go back and look at the last one, Jason?
What, this one?
Is the difference because, yeah, lose gammon is the difference. We do have, that's the difference.
Yeah.
You know what they say, if you get the same roll two times in a row, that means you didn't play it right the first time.
Is that what they say? I've never heard that before.
I've heard that.
Nope.
Okay, we got a 5-1 to play. I kind of like this.
I like hitting twice. There's hitting twice.
Where's the hitting twice?
Oh, hitting loose on the two ones.
Well, that's fun.
Well, I mean, we don't have enough to do an attacking game plan, but they've got all those blots we can pick up in the meantime.
Okay, I didn't see this at first. I didn't really think about that. All right, I'll go along with the double hit.
You guys like this? Clearly the fun play.
Yeah, and we've already turned the cube, so we need...
I was gonna say, isn't the rule, once you've turned the cube, you have to be aggressive like that?
Yes, yes, you want, you're no longer sneaking up on anything, so you want to be, yeah, you want to be aggressive. All right, let's do it.
All right, is that because of the Jacoby Rule?
No, it's not because of the Jacoby Rule. It's because if you haven't turned the cube, you don't want to blow past your market because you don't get credit for any of that. I mean, you do, but you don't get as much credit for it. With the Jacoby Rule in particular, you don't want big plays before you've turned the cube, because then you really don't get credit for it.
Well, the Jacoby Rule is a money game option.
Right.
It typically doesn't happen in like...
Ah, that's true. Yes, yes, thanks. Okay, yeah, it's the double hit, and they entered one.
Okay, that's pounce.
Yeah, yes, let's pounce, ooh.
What does the computer say about it?
Yeah, double hit was great.
Okay, 8, 7, 7, 1 is at least a consideration.
Okay, let's look at that. 8, 7, 7, 1. Puts two up, no blots in the board. It's pretty good.
And we still have a couple loose checkers that we can pick up of theirs. Anything else, I think we risk giving up the initiative, so I kind of like that.
Yeah. I wish we had more checkers in the zone. I guess we're gonna take care of that in the next turn after they dance one more time. Is there any play that involves hitting loose on the five-point? Is there any play that involves hitting loose on the five point?
If we could cover either of the five or the one, I would say yes, but.
I mean, this would be the biggest.
Yeah, getting the third on, on top is the nice, important is getting the second on top.
Yeah. Alright, I, I think Rick's talked me into this. Mike?
Yeah, that, that's the one I'd say. Well, I see other plays, but. I, I like the fun play, thirteen, seven, five.
Would you, would you guys consider hitting on the eighteen, too?
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, I think we did. I mean, this was, this was the play that we looked at here. But that was. It was just too loose. It didn't make another point. It's nice to put a third checker on the bar, but it just, it wasn't quite enough.
It's the second best play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, they danced, they rolled six-one, so here comes, here comes the all-out assault now.
Three-one.
Just to throw a little smug equity out there, which is exactly what I thought might happen when I wanted to drop the double.
Eighteen, nine?
Eighteen, nine? Okay, I, I have a, I have a different play. How about, how about thirteen, seven, eight, five?
That was the other thing I was, I thought.
I, I think we can afford to be really aggressive and, and not let them anchor so easily. If they hit back, so be it, right? We, we have so little to lose there by getting hit back, but we have so much to gain if we can make the five point. It's, it's gammon city.
Yeah, I guess uh the main risk is if we do that and they come in with two checkers. We're, we have nothing in the attack zone and they'll be coming in before we get our checkers back around, but. The odds of that, I, I think it's probably a worthwhile risk.
Their, their counter assault is muted by the fact that we have a good uh anchor.
True.
Um, Mike, what do you like?
Seven to five.
Okay. Rick, you're alright with this?
I'm alright with it.
Okay, here we go. And, yeah, it was closer. All the top plays involve hitting on the five point. Okay. They danced again with a six-three.
I don't like the way you're rolling for us there.
You rigged the dice.
Yeah, too bad, too bad. Okay, do the one first.
Okay, there's the, oops.
You, you don't, you didn't mean that. You meant this. I did.
Okay.
I'm kinda thinking instead of eighteen, thirteen, twenty-one, sixteen. Give up the anchor, but just be, you know, have. Our blots everywhere ready to pounce.
Okay, I wanna consider a different play. I wanna consider coming down. And. Because I'm not really so concerned about hoovering up these checkers. I think the top priority is uh closing the board. Also, uh trying to ensure that they don't anchor, so I'm ready to hit loose. So we put a checker on the eight point now. Uh threes, fours, fives and sixes, potentially depending on where they enter, can be used to hit loose.
Reasonable argument to me.
Now roll a four-four.
Yeah, right. Uh, Mike, you, you, now you're gonna have to chime in.
Oh, okay, yeah, I like uh. Eight and five.
You like eight and five. You like it for the reasons that I'm saying. You, you're ready to hit loose if they come in with one checker?
Yes, yeah, that's the most.
Okay, alright. Then, let's do that. And. Yes, but it's close and Rick's play not that far behind. Gammon numbers are big. Alright, are they gonna roll double fours now? Nope, just the one.
Halfway.
Okay. Now we're gonna attack, ooh. Oh.
They all line up nicely, but they're on the nineteen, not us.
Yeah.
Well then play it really fast, twenty-four to four.
Uh, yeah. Oh, it won't let me. Hmm.
Eighteen, eight.
Eighteen to eight.
And twenty-one to sixteen twice.
Twenty-one to sixteen twice. Not bad. Okay, I, I like the eighteen to eight. Um, okay, what about an, uh, an even more aggressive play like this? Just trying to bring more, more uh. This, this is a freight mover. Just trying to move more freight into the uh attack zone. Just get it closer.
In fact, that's not a direct, I, I, it may be right, but I don't think it would be right by a huge amount.
No, certainly not.
So the one I'm considering is twenty-one to six.
Ah, twenty-one to six, ah.
And then eighteen to thirteen.
Ah, yes, that brings a direct cover. A direct attacker and cover, and bring some more checkers into the zone.
You guys have too many good options.
Yeah.
How about the same start I like, but instead of the eighteen, thirteen, twenty-one, sixteen? For the last one.
And what is your desire for that checker on the sixteen point? What do you, what's the idea?
Just. It's. Not, um, the other one isn't a direct into the zone, just like, into the home board, just like this isn't, but it mobilizes another checker and it gives us more direct shots along the way, which may be useful.
Yeah. Okay, so Mike, you, you still like this? After that?
Brings a checker on the eighteen closer to the action.
Yeah, alright, I think I'm gonna go with this. Uh, but I think Rick's place is probably not very far behind. Uh, oh, we got, uh, we got lit up.
It's sixteen, twelve.
The original play that Rick suggested. Came out on top. Alright. Okay.
Fight harder, fight harder.
Try harder, yeah, okay.
Fight, fight harder.
Fight for my choices. He knows in the long run, that's their best chance.
Okay, three, two.
Wait, what, what did we roll?
Uh, you danced with a three-one.
It doesn't want to show us.
No, I don't, I don't need to show you. It's, it's, everything's rigged anyway. Uh-oh, that, they, they're starting their anchor. We got, we gotta hit that checker, right? We don't want them to anchor. We're gonna all-out assault on the. On the deuce point. Oh, we missed.
No, it hits.
What'd you say? It hits? Yeah, it hits.
It hit, uh, no, it hits thirteen-nine.
Oh, he didn't mean that.
No, I did mean that, either three to two.
And then what, eight, seven? Eight, seven gives us, oh, I don't, actually, I don't know. Uh. Do we want more combinations to be able to hit on the two point? Assume they don't come in.
Yeah, I think I'd rather that on the eight. It's more combinations to hit on the two, and. If barring that, we might be able to at least make the eight, which could be a useful point.
And by the way, if you're gonna make a point in the outfield, you'd rather make the eight point than the seven point, because when they anchor on the deuce, you don't really wanna be on the seven point. Uh, it's, it's hard to clear the seven point when they have the deuce point anchor. Okay, so then maybe we just sneak up like this?
Right, either, either that or twenty-four, twenty-three.
Yeah. We're not gonna use the six to hit from the twenty.
Is, um, I, I'm confused here. Uh, Jason, Mike and Rick, is that the red team?
Or the white team, and uh you're on the red team.
Bill Powell's on the red team, okay.
Yeah, Bill Powell, you're on the red team, and you'll notice you're not doing very well right now, Bill.
Yeah, I noticed. I, I came in late, but it looks like my team.
I blame Bill for getting here late.
Okay, I wanna make an argument for not playing to the twenty point, which is, um, it kinda, it kinda. Makes us a little inflexible on this side. Uh, to try to get those checkers out in a, in a good place. I think I'd rather play twenty-four, twenty-three. It just gives us a little more flexibility with moving those checkers.
Yep.
I think it's a really tiny difference.
In fact, I'd rather twenty-two, twenty-one than twenty-one, twenty, but yeah, I think twenty-four, twenty-three is better.
Mike?
Agreed, twenty-four, twenty-three.
Alright, there we go.
It's our second error.
Okay, uh. Uh.
Nice kingdom for a two.
It wanted the nine-eight.
Okay, I don't understand that at all. I don't know why I wanna pile them up on the eight point. I, I, I don't believe this.
It might be because if you get, if you roll double sixes, you'd close this out.
Yeah, double six or double three closes out. Right now, we have no closeouts.
I guess, I guess that's it, but I, I'm really more thinking about the, the loose hits. I mean, I, I get that, yeah. Okay. Uh, right?
Eight, two, nine, four.
Eight, two, nine, four.
Can you roll double twos?
The red dice were, didn't see it.
Yeah, the red dice were not good.
It was a three-one.
Yeah.
Again.
Okay, I, I like this. Mike?
Agreed.
Yeah. Well, this is easy.
Any two.
Oh, I got the two. Oh, we're really gonna have to fight for this now.
Double sixes.
Six-six.
Is it, is it considered rude to cheer for your opponent's only bad roll?
I mean, over the board, yeah, that's a little rude. You can do it here if you want, Bill.
I do it over the board though, so it's wrong.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're one of those guys.
I think that it, I think.
Yeah, those, those were the two I was thinking about.
Oh my god.
To ask if there's any reason why you prefer either the eighteen or the twenty, but.
I don't know.
Are you here?
I, I would just say that this is getting a checker closer. We, we really still wanna close them out. Even with no backup in sight, I, I wanna hit loose on the two point if we get an opportunity.
I'm here, Adam. Um, I caused most of this trouble, so I'm just trying to see if you guys can get out of it.
Yeah.
You know, I've never been yelled at so badly is when, when Gazi yelled at me when I, I, I wa- I wished that he rolled like a double five or something. And Gazi just ripped into me.
Did he roll a double five first?
No, no, I mean, I was wishing for him to roll a bad roll. And, which was bad etiquette, but I didn't know it at the time. I just, I.
And did he roll, did he end up rolling the bad roll?
No, he did not.
Okay.
You could do it in your mind, but not out loud.
It's just Gazi. It was just Gazi.
Hey, listen, I silently root for my opponent's bad rolls all the time.
Yeah, silently is the key word there.
Yeah, silently. Okay, I don't know the difference here. I, I would just say to move, to do this, just to bring a checker closer. I, I know it's like a very tiny amount. Um.
The, the spacing is good, that, we're, we're fine.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, either play fine with me.
Alright, we'll do this. Alright, here comes their two. Oh, they didn't get the two, sorry.
Three-one again.
Yep, yep, it's all rigged, I told you. Alright, four-one.
Might as well hit it on the way.
Yeah, we hit it on the way, bring it closer. Listen, we can win some backgammons here, that would be great.
That protects us against the double twos.
Yes.
Any two, let's not be greedy.
Yeah, you know what they say, four on the bar is better by far. Okay, are we good with this?
I'm good.
Two, two or more, actually, this is, what it says, whatever.
Alright, five-two, alright, I wanna hit loose.
Uh, yeah, and get him range.
And bring the guy there, that's right, six away, perfect.
Yeah, how'd you guys get five on the bar? That's a lot.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I wonder who wanted against that.
We're that good, Jason.
I didn't want to cover when I told them so.
Okay, alright, we're gonna cover, yeah?
My smug equity is just growing.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's, it's through the roof, Adam, you're, you're a genius.
Who's the etiquette on taking smug equity by rooting against your own team?
Don't roll double fours.
Yeah, don't roll double fours, right, um.
Get the front guy out.
Okay, how do we, how do we fare against double, with double fours here?
Not good.
Not good? Is there a way we can uh handle double fours?
Twenty-four to twenty-two.
You can, twenty-five, twenty, and then keep going.
Like this?
Well, twenty, twenty-eighteen. No, but then double, well, double sixes don't fully play, but.
Oh my god, gee, just move already.
Oh, you know, you, you're fine against double fours because you can do twenty-four, twenty, then sixteen. Oh, no, then it.
Yeah, that, that, right, we would be stopped.
This is good.
Eighteen, fourteen, ten, you're good.
I mean, the worst thing, oh my.
We're good.
It's kinda, it's kinda sadistic to spend a lot of time.
I think we should debate it.
Let's go here, alright. Let, let's have a full exploration of all legal moves.
Right, uh, how's this? Very good?
Fine.
Fine, okay.
Although I think we should grind it out and think, think harder about it.
Yeah, I know, right, um. Let's see, I don't know, how's this?
Uh, could you roll any smaller?
Don't, don't say that, I was gonna run, uh, uh, roll double one, uh, two-one.
They are not.
One, one.
Thinking too much about, uh, oh, this is kinda weird.
Thirteen-six?
Thirteen-six.
Double fives are awkward. Thirteen, um, fourteen-seven? Uh, still have problem with fives.
Maybe we can't, uh, what if we do, uh, I don't like this so much, double ones breaks us up. Let's, let's just do this. Double fives is not awful. It won't, it won't leave a shot.
Right.
Stephen, of course.
I think it's gonna take them a while to get off the bar, so we're fine if we don't leave them.
Alright, let's go.
Yeah, because we have Jason.
Alright, here we go. We're, we're getting out of here. Uh, double twos, not great, but we just cleared the six point. Is there another way of playing this? We could do like this?
Fourteen-eleven?
Oh, fourteen-eleven.
Yeah, no, right, we can't do fourteen-eleven, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, let's just do this. This is fine.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, this is good. Double sixes is fine. Double fives, alright. One, two, three, yeah, I'm alright with this. This look okay?
Yeah. Get a few two ones, drag, drag it out.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, first, first warning.
Four-two? That. I may be wrong on this, I don't know the theory, but I view this, if the six-four is leaving an odd number near the front, counting that odd one out.
Well, yeah, uh, the problem with this play is it leaves a shot on double sixes. Whereas, uh, this does not leave a shot on double sixes. Getting hit is how we're gonna lose a gammon. And I think, I think we should play to not get hit. Uh, Mike?
And more normal rolls, not high doubles.
It's not, it's not great, I don't know. May, may, yeah, maybe it's worth. Having the checker on the high point, because it's gonna be better later. I, I actually don't really know. Where's Mike?
Six to four twice.
You like six to four twice? Okay, well, I'm not sure, so I, I'm gonna go along with that, so we don't leave a shot.
I have no objection.
We're gonna get a shot. No matter what you do, we're gonna get a shot.
I'm aware of that. Uh, oof. Not great.
And with our powerful board, you're gonna be sorry we do.
Wait, before you, is it worth considering for the two, fourteen-nine, four-two?
Yes, it is worth considering.
I think clearing the six point is worth considering.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that too. Clear the six point. This won't leave a shot on anything.
Gets behind you. Or in front of you, I should say.
Yeah. I don't know, I, I think, I, I kinda like this. This doesn't leave a shot, whereas, see, this is awkward, right? Uh, six, five, six.
Very awkward.
Yeah. So Rick, do you like, you like clearing the six?
Play for the gammon, not the backgammon?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, playing for the back.
Play to not get hit, yeah. We still have, we still have significant backgammon chances. Alright, let's go. Let's go for it.
Okay.
I have.
Can you analyze this one, Jason?
Our rating just went way up.
Oh, boy.
I have a traumatic story when pre, uh, pre-clearing.
Okay, it's because of the backgammons.
They like the four-two.
Because of backgammons.
Yeah, actually, lower gammon chance, comparable win chance, huge more backgammon chance, yeah.
Oh, oh, they got one in. Okay, here we go, bye. I say we rip them off.
Looks good.
More backgammons. I bet, I'm sure this is right. Okay, now this risks a shot.
Sixes, fives, fours, or three, no, not threes. But threes would be awkward.
Okay, this is completely safe but doesn't get a checker off. We're down to thirteen checkers. Maybe it's useful to get a checker off? Sometimes these can be right because you're playing for a backgammon, when they have four checkers up like that, you know? Not sure, I get these wrong all the time in these. Playing for backgammons.
I like four to three, four to two.
You like four to three, four to two? Okay, Rick?
Because, yeah.
I could, I was about to be talked into the other, but yeah, I think four-three-four-two.
Alright.
Yeah, the other way, risk not only shots that turn, but also in the next turn, the turn after that, too.
This could also, if we get a high of something one.
Very close. But uh, much higher backgammons with ripping a checker off. But i- it's, it's. Almost no difference. Hey.
Do that again, oh my god, we came in.
Came in at the wrong time.
Eight checkers. Yeah, just, yeah. High double, high double, high double.
There's not much here, let's just finish it up. Well, I hope everybody had fun.
That was certainly funny, even though it's disgraceful for us.
Alright, well, that's a good place to stop, um. Hopefully, it doesn't work out like this with uh, with the team uh, stuck on the bar the whole time. That's, that part's kinda no fun. Um, I don't, I'm not sure there's a way out of that.
Our PR improved a lot.
Except the double, that was our way out of it, not except the double.
The borderline double?
Yes, that one.
That double was good, covering up was bad, uh, not, not good.
Yeah. Okay, um. I'm going to stop the recording here in just a moment, um. Thank you all for coming to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study session or our tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticvg@gmail.com.